Welcome to tonight's study session for July 21, 2025. Good evening and welcome to the Westminster City Council Study Session of July 21, 2025. Thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate your participation. We'd like to remind everyone that our meetings follow the rules of decorum, which are posted at the chamber doors. These rules apply during meetings, breaks, and transitions. We ask all attendees to remain respectful, refrain from disruptions, and avoid any threatening or intimidating behavior. No audible expressions of support or opposition are allowed. Signs and placards are prohibited, and all guests must stay seated in designated areas, ensuring aisles and doorways are clear. City Council reports. Councilor Zaddie?
No, ma'am.
Councilor Hott?
No.
Councilor Carmelia?
Yes, I did lots of things, starting with I went to gay games in Denver event, which I had never heard of before, and I really should have. Apparently Denver is currently being considered for the Olympic. It's similar to the Olympics for the queer community, and that was really interesting. The governor was there, Representative Teteau was there, there was counselors from all across Colorado, and so we're up in the running right now against three other communities around the world, and there are representatives from Australia and Brazil, and it was kind of wild how many, it was, you know, a pretty global event that is brand new to me. So I'm excited about that, and if we do get it, obviously it's in Denver, but it would affect all of our economies, and so that's a pretty big deal. And I went to Dr. Cog, which it looks like Mayor Protam is not attending this evening, so I can give, well, I wasn't actually planning to give a brief report. Let me look through my notes.
She's online.
Oh, good. I can, I'm good. Thank you. I will give an update about Movies in the Park, which was really great. There was Adams County, this was interesting. Adams County had a workforce event this weekend, and I attended it, and it was not on our calendars, and I only happened to go because my sister was there representing the company that she works with. But I wanted to speak with the organizers to make sure that we could get it on our radar and amplify what they're trying to do in our community. They were right here in Westminster, and it was on the north side, and I don't remember what building it was in, but we can get ahold. But anyway, I talked to Carla, who works with Adam County Human Services, and she organized the event, and I think she does it annually. And I let her know that I'd love it if we were looped in and we could help advertise it and get some of our folks there, because they had booths for workforce, housing, for children, for all sorts of stuff, you know, for Adams County, and I thought that was interesting that it wasn't on our calendar. So, but it was a great event. And they were giving out Chromebooks for those in need. They handed out 200 free Chromebooks, and all you had to do was register in advance for the event, and if you were income-qualified, then you got one, which was pretty amazing. So. And then I went to Schoenberg Farms, their viewing. That was really exciting. They had an ice cream social, and I got to take a look inside the building. It was just really beautiful. I'm really excited about that investment going into our community, and the folks I talked to were really excited to see it happening. There were a lot of folks there from around the neighborhood, and that was really great.
So I went to the Highland Hills Foundation Golf Tournament, and that was my first one I've golfed in. It was fun. You know, I love golf courses because I love the wildlife. I saw blue heron, I saw a giant eagle, and I saw a huge carp in the pond that I threw, you know, hit my ball into, so. But there was a great turnout, and it was fun. I also went to the movie night. I do have a question about the sustainability booth they had. They had a survey there. I want to know to what end we're doing the survey for. I know in 2018, the city tried to take over the trash. People were up in arms. We had more standing room only, so I want to know what we're up to in the survey, and that's all I have.
Councilor Dema?
Excuse me. I went to the movie at the park as well with the mayor, and I saw Councilor Ireland there. The mayor and I were handing out flyers for our town hall. A lot of people excited about the town hall, so look forward to Thursday night.
Mayor Protam?
Hi, everybody. So I have had family visiting, but was able to get to Dr. Cog on Wednesday, and I know Councilor Carmelia was there, but I will pull up my notes here. So I gave an update on member, just that they're working on, the performance committee is working on our member dues, and those are likely going to stay static, but that they are working to at least elicit a percentage of tip funds to go towards Dr. Cog for administration, and so that's more to come on that. And they're working on a recommendation for the full Dr. Cog board in September. There's also the Economic Development Advisory Team. They're working on the Economic Development District for, again, which I know I mentioned this a long time ago when we entered into this effort, but that is, again, to be able to bring federal funding to the region and to individual cities for grants. So more to come on that. They gave an update on the small area forecast, which if anybody's ever used, we use the Dr. Cog model for land use when we're looking at like transportation studies, large scale, as well as it serves as a baseline for the, any traffic studies that are done for the city. So that Dr. Cog model was updated, and that also feeds into regional efforts like our, like the Housing Needs Assessment and the Regional Transportation Plan and Air Quality analyses. So one thing that was reminded, that folks reminded everybody was that if you're taking advantage of utilizing the Regional Housing Needs Assessment done by Dr. Cog for meeting the DOLA requirements for our Housing Needs Assessment, that's a really easy workaround. And I know that Manager Andrews responded to Councilor Carmelia regarding whether we'd be doing that. It is, all we have to do is have a, essentially, a meeting with public, you know, with public input, which essentially could be a council meeting, and then that would suffice for us to be able to utilize the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. There was an update on the Active Transportation Plan, which is kind of cool. It's a regional plan, but it focuses in on walking, bicycling, rolling, scooters, micro mobility, and it is in, it's going to be in a comment period, starting essentially for the month of August, and that will be at engage.drcog.org/ATP. And that focuses on recommendations for universal access to walking sidewalks, making sure that they're accessible, and we'll have policy and program recommendations, as well as a five- to 10-year implementation plan. So hopefully that means that that could be an avenue for us to be able to get grants over time to help fund specific projects within the city. Let me see what else. And then I'll finish it up with saying that there was a FastTrax update, and that's an annual update that RTD provides, and I did inquire whether there would be an, let's see. One thing I do want to follow up on, this was for Chris Chauvans, sorry, I was trying to understand my notes. I wasn't sure if we are supposed to get any improved service to the Westminster Station at all with the optimization plan, so that was a question I had, because I haven't looked at that optimization plan for a while. And nothing too exciting about the FastTrax update. They say it's 75% done, but that, you know, obviously our area is not done, and they made short mention of the joint service, but not a lot. So that's it.
Thank you. I met with Alejandra, Congresswoman Pedersen's assistant here in town, and talked to her. She just wanted to know what all we were doing, so I explained about all the things going on in the city, some of the things that we're doing with water treatment plant coming up, told her as soon as that we did have a date for that groundbreaking, and Congresswoman Pedersen would be more than welcome to come, helping us to get a grant for that piece, and told her about the courthouse and where we were with that, and she just took notes and said, if there's anything that we need, always contact her. We had our manager talk on Tuesday night. People were very chatty, and we were here a little bit later, but it's always good to have people engaged. Movie in the Park was great. We had, Chief Hose was there, and he knows those maps so well, people could, it was interesting, he would show the one map, that today's map, and then he would say, well, look at this map, and he, they could, they pointed to where our non-service areas were, and he said, that's where those new buildings will be going for fire stations. So great conversations and inviting people to Thursday night's town hall. I know from talking to so many people, we have a lot of people from around that area, from Thornton, North Glenn, Boomfield, Federal Heights, that also come to our movie in the nights, and just kids were everywhere. It was a fun time. Remind everybody Trader Joe's opens Friday morning at 9:00 a.m., his grand opening. I don't know what time they really open. Does, I don't know if anybody's here that knows.
That's it.
When they, they're going to truly open the doors and get going. And as I was in my pre-meeting with Jody tonight, my trial doctor called. I haven't heard from him for two weeks, and the news on me is, I'm feeling great, but no news on any new trials. So he gave me all my options again, and I said, I'm patient. There's five trials out there that look good, but they can't give him when they're going to open, and how many people are going to take, and all that stuff. So he's waiting, and he doesn't want to get ahead of the game, so that's all I know on that piece. And on August 1st, I do go in for a biopsy to finish the trial that I just finished two weeks ago, and they'll do a biopsy to see whatever's going on, and maybe they'll learn something in the meantime that helps them with the new trials. So I'm good, and keeping busy, and we have plenty to do, so I don't really think about it. What do you have tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a brief report tonight. I will make sure that I follow up, Councilor Ireland, with your question about the sustainability booth survey, and also regarding the question from Mayor Protam Nermella regarding improved service to Westminster Station through the optimization study. So I'll get back to you on both of those. I'll start my report tonight. Second slide, please. Mayor, thank you. The grand opening, this is a big one for Westminster, the grand opening of Trader Joe's is officially happening this Friday at 9:00 a.m. And for those who've not been tracking this, this is located just across 92nd Avenue from City Hall. Here, the address is 9350 Sheridan Boulevard, and that is in that retail area right across from City Hall and 92nd. So you can come in off Sheridan and access Trader Joe's. Our communications team tells me that our Trader Joe's posts have exploded, and we've got more traffic on our Trader Joe's posts than on any other single thing we've ever posted on. So just to put it in perspective, our traffic signal timing experts have been working on those signal timings, bracing for some changes. So everyone is welcome to that grand opening, 9:00 a.m. this week.
But it is the first Trader Joe's that has parking. I mean, every place else I hear from people, you have to drive around and round waiting for somebody to leave. They have a whole huge parking lot. People get great exercise before going.
That should be the headline, first one with parking.
You're both very right on that point. People are very excited about being able to park and go into Trader Joe's in Westminster. So that one is, is another part of that positive story. Next slide, please. By way of update, I do provide, for those of you who haven't tracked, we are having a City Council Town Hall on Thursday, July 24th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's at our Westview Recreation Center at 10747 West 108 Avenue. From 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. is the open house party of the evening, and that's a family-friendly educational opportunities. We'll have displays, education booths, some heavy machinery. There will be a fire hose for kids and adults who so choose to enjoy, as well as food refreshments, and the ever-popular Kona Ice van will be there providing Kona Ice. The actual town hall will begin right at 6 o'clock sharp, and that will run until 8:00 p.m., and that will include some presentations from staff, and then move quickly into small group discussions with participants, with a reporting out at the end from the participants on what their feedback for us is, and that will wrap up the evening at 8:00 p.m. So this Thursday at the Westview Recreation Center, if you can't make it, at 5:00, the actual town hall will start at 6:00 p.m.
And childcare is provided?
And so, thank you, Mayor. I want to clarify, childcare is provided. So if you have your children, they can stay after they have fun from 5:00 to 6:00, and we'll take care of them. Next slide, please. Also happening, the Westy Craft Brew Fest, this is our annual event. This is this Saturday, July 26th, and that runs from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. We do have booked over 35 local breweries that will be present, live music, food trucks, and unparalleled vistas of the front range, so that's for sure. Tickets are limited, so you can look forward to having the fun by getting your ticket in advance, highly recommended, and the prices are $50, general admission, 65 VIP, and $5, only $5 if you're not planning on having any samples there. Next slide, please. On tonight's agenda, there are four items. One is an information-only item, and that's regarding the establishment of a local Noxious Weed Advisory Board. We do have staff present if you have questions on that one, and then we have three presentations, the first of which is the 2025 state and federal legislation update, and that'll be introduced by staff, and then we have each of our lobbyists here this evening to run through that with you. And then we have our 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Auditor's Report on the results of the 2024 Annual Financial Statement Audit, and I know that our auditors here this evening, our external auditor, will be presenting that. And then finally, a concept plan review for Uplands filing three parcel C1, the Pro's multi-family development. Next slide, please. This week, Tuesday, this is canceled. Our Planning Commission meeting is not happening this Tuesday, July 22nd, so no Planning Commission this week. On Wednesday, there is a meeting of the Historic Landmark Board, and that starts right at 7:00 here at Westminster City Hall. And then on Thursday, as we've described, there's the Paramedics and Pavement Town Hall at the Westview Recreation Center, starting at 5:00 or 6:00 for the actual town hall. Next slide, please. Also this week, I'm going to give this a second plug because it's so important, Trader Joe's, and the team knows that I really like to put pictures with our community members in it. This is a rare case where there are no community members because it's not open yet, but we'll have a follow-up slide on the Trader Joe's opening that will have, I guarantee you, Westminster residents showing up for the grand opening. We also have Coffee with the Cop on Friday, July 25th. That's at Cozy Coffee at 14694 Orchard Parkway, Suite 1200, and that runs from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. We also have, in the continuation of the Summer Activation Series in downtown Westminster, Summer Sounds featuring Silas Herman and the Tone Unit. This is a pretty big draw for Westminster and downtown Westminster. That's in the Central Park Plaza, I'm sorry, the Central Plaza Park, starts at 6:00, and will run through till 8:00 p.m. On Saturday, July 26th, as I've mentioned, is the Westy Craft Brew Fest, and then on Sunday, also as part of the Summer Activation Series, Yoga on the Plaza, and that's again at the downtown Westminster Central Plaza Park, and that runs from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Next slide, please. For our next meeting, there are, that's on Monday, July 28th, starts at 6:30. There's six items on consent and two items of new business. The first of the new business will be the first reading of Counselors' Bill 22. That's amending the Westminster Municipal Code to update Board and Commission language, including term limits. This is as directed by City Council, so we're bringing that back. And then the second item of new business is an update on the Midland Building Nuisance Abatement, and that's a first reading of Counselors' Bill 23 regarding a supplemental appropriation to the 2025 Capital Improvement Fund for abatement activities. So this is a follow-up to earlier direction from City Council on that building.
Sounds like a hallelujah.
It's coming. Next slide, please. As always, can contact us through our Access Westminster portal and app, westminsterco.gov/accesswminster. And as always, feedback is welcome, and I've had a few feedbacks in the past week, that our response time has been a little slow on a couple of items, and so that is super helpful when people let us know that, because that's how we track the tickets and the performance. So if you are not getting immediate response to your inquiry, please reach out and let us know that, and we get that fixed right away. And then you can always reach us directly at our phone number at City Hall, 303-658-2400, or westminsterco.gov, or any one of our four social media platforms. That's all I have.
Any questions? I only have one thing about Noxious Weeds. Our parking lot, and then it faces a bunch of fences that people have, but there's some green grass, and then there's weeds, weeds, weeds along the fences. Can we not mow the weeds down when we mow the grass?
If that's our side, we sure can, and if it's the private property side, then we'll let the private property owner know to get those down. The Noxious Weed Group will actually help us tackle these issues, especially the relationship between private and public property. Councilor Ireland?
I mentioned those weeds that I talked about long ago are still there. They've gotten really tall, some of them, and I think they can't mow them now. I don't know what they, they need a, some bigger equipment than a mower.
Okay.
And there's thistles, basically, I think.
Ready for our 2025 state and federal legislation?
Right, I'll ask, thank you, Mayor. I'll ask our staff lead, Erin Ferriter, Policy and Budget Manager. I'm not going to introduce.
You guys are getting set up. I just want to say, I know if Mayor Protam was sitting next to me, I can see her head nodding on the phone. This was, this past year was just phenomenal, being able to talk to you guys once a week between her Dr. Cog and the other things she serves on, and with me and the transportation issues, and Metro Mayor's caucus, and all the things that I had shared in years previous that you sit there and you go, huh, I haven't heard about that, or whatever, and you always would say, what have you heard? And so we were able to share that. I just, for me, and I think for Mayor Protam, it was very helpful. Thank you for that time. Thank you for allowing us to be part of those conversations. It made a world of difference in how the other committees that we sit on, how it went last year. It was just so much different this year than what we had had in the past, so I thank you all.
Thank you for that feedback. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Erin Ferriter, Policy and Budget Manager. Tonight's presentation will provide an overview Tonight's presentation will provide an overview of the city's federal and state legislative lobbying efforts. We'll begin with an update from Mike Dino and Mara Sheldon from Squire, Pat and Boggs, our federal lobbyist team. They will provide an overview highlighting their monitoring of federal policy developments, advocacy on priority issues such as, but not limited to, the tax-exempt status on municipal bonds, and ongoing engagement in congressional offices, with congressional offices and federal agencies. Following that, we'll hear from Amy Atwood of Atwood Public Affairs, our city's state lobbyist, on the 2025 state legislative session. Ms. Atwood will share a summary of legislative actions from the session, as well as ongoing efforts. We'll begin with Mike and Mara, but if we could hold our questions until the end of the both presentations, as they kind of tie and flow together to keep us going.
Excellent, thanks, Erin. Again, Mike Dino and my colleague Mara Sheldon, thank you for having us. It seems, Mayor, and you and your colleagues who are with us in Washington, it seems like ages ago, right? Gosh, President Trump has been in office six months as of yesterday, and today I thought we'd focus on is the three major funding packages that two have moved forward, and one coming down the pike as it relates to appropriations. But the one big beautiful bill did pass, was signed by the President on July 4th. Erin mentioned tax exemption for municipal bonds. I knew that was on our radar screen. Well, it never came up in the one big beautiful bill. There were a lot of other ways they were looking to pay for all the permanent tax breaks, as well as the new ones, and that never showed up. So thankfully, we can still see our municipal bonds, public financing, continue to get tax exemption. But a lot of other things happened with the big beautiful bill. Number one, the cuts to Medicaid are around $1 trillion. The cuts to Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Plan, SNAP, are about $120 million. We talked about those issues when we were in Washington. So significant cuts there that won't begin to really take effect right away. This bill's kind of an interesting bill. The things that will take effect right away are the tax benefits, largely the permanent tax cuts related to 2017 that were passed, the tax brackets that were established then. We also see exemption on taxes for tips, for overtime, and then we do see a tax credit for seniors that'll go into effect, all subject to some limits, at least those last three related to income and such. And those will phase out. Those are not permanent, tips, overtime, and the tax credit for seniors. One positive thing in the bill that a lot of people, particularly on the local level, advocated for was the child tax credit, and that was made permanent, and it was increased from $2,000 to $2,200, and was indexed by inflation. So that's a big deal, certainly for a lot of advocates who wanted to see that in place. Today, we did get a report, though, that the one big beautiful bill does add 3.4 trillion to the national deficit over the next 10 years. On the plus side, the Colorado, I mean, the Congressional Budget Office, known as the CBO, it's a nonpartisan group in Washington, organization that does try to assess impacts from major legislation on the economy, does predict 10 million people will lose health coverage. They originally predicted about 11.8 million. So still a lot of people, but not as many as they originally predicted. One thing about this bill, a lot of people ask, well, how did it move so fast? There were a lot of predictions it would take a year to pass this. Well, the Senate only needed 51 votes. So keep that in mind as we move toward appropriations, where the Senate will need 60 votes to get legislation passed. They only needed 51 votes. The vote was 51 to 50, with the Vice President breaking the tie. So a lot more to come. On Medicaid, the first thing we'll see that will take effect is that they'll begin to reduce the amount that states can do the provider fee or tax. We have a fee in Colorado, and Amy can talk more about that, because that'll trigger, that's what'll trigger some more things at the state and the legislature. But that's the first part of the Medicaid that will begin to take place, is the states will have to scale back how much they impose either a tax or fee on hospitals to pay for Medicaid expansion, which Colorado certainly is one of those states. For SNAP, a lot of it will depend on what the Agriculture Department does. SNAP is under the Agriculture Department, and so we might begin to see some things related to, they're moving eligibility from age 54 or work requirements up to 64 now. And so that will be one of the near-term things that will happen, but we'll have to see. It's not totally decided what the timing is on that. So that's the one big beautiful bill highlight. There's a lot to it, and certainly if you have more questions, we'll take them when we get to that point. What happened last week in Washington was the rescission package. It wasn't a big bill, it was only $9 billion, but it cut federal, or it cut federal funding for foreign aid, and a billion, $1.1 billion for the Corporation for Public Broadcasting, NPR and PPS. A rescission bill is basically the President saying, hey, Congress, I don't want you spending this money, you're not spending it, will you please vote to return it to the Federal Treasury? And they ultimately did that. Now, President Trump tried this in his first term, and it was thwarted, it lost in 2018, but this time it did pass, and again, it passed with a 51 to 48 vote. We will probably see more rescission packages coming from the President in the White House, asking Congress to return money that Congress approved back to the US Treasury. And we may see those come in the next two months, in August and September, before the end of the federal fiscal year, which is September 30th. Again, this only takes 51 votes in the Senate, so that's why it's a lot more manageable to pass the bill. Of course, in the House, they had very narrow margins passing both the one big beautiful bill and the rescission package, but they passed it by about four votes, I think, wasn't it, Mara? So the President's on a good winning streak, quite frankly, with these bills. The one that's going to be hard is coming up. It's the 2026, fiscal year 2026 appropriations. We are currently in fiscal year 2025. We're in fiscal year 2025 through a continuing resolution. Both chambers of Congress never passed budget appropriation bills for fiscal year 2025, so they just said, let's just do what we did in 2024 and move on, and that's what they did in March. Well, they're trying again. The House is moving pretty effectively and getting a lot of bills out of committee, and the Senate is also doing the same. There's a few things of note right now. We have one city project that's in play in the US Senate for funding, $4 million for the water tank relining. That's in the Senate Interior and Environment Committee that should hear this bill this week. So we'll keep an eye on that and see if the city's project makes it into the list of projects that'll be funded on the Senate side. The one, the other thing that you, as a city, have taken a look at in terms of funding your water projects are state revolving funds. This is federal money that helps the state fund clean water, so for your wastewater and stormwater, as well as drinking water funding. The House voted last week to cut over $400 million for clean water state revolving funds. That's almost 25% cut. And then they voted to cut drinking water funding by 200 million, or almost 20% cut. Now, these cuts are not as bad as the President had proposed in his budget that came out in the spring, but I wouldn't worry a whole heck of a lot yet, because I don't think the Senate's going to cut as much as the House. But we'll see, but if they do, that'll be significant cuts to the state revolving fund. The states will see less money for those funds, and certainly less money will come down to local communities. One other important thing, because I was talking about how many votes you need in the Senate to pass appropriation bills, and you need 60 votes to get a vote for appropriations, and that's where the Democrats will come into play. So as we get toward September 30th, there will be a lot of huffing and puffing about possibly a government shutdown. Mara and I hear that every day. But, and some people think it'll happen. There are very ardent Democrats who want to see it happen. There's more moderate Democrats who are like, you know, let's be practical about this. So we'll see how that plays out. Chuck Schumer balked last time at shutting down the government, and we'll see if that happens again. But they need 60 votes, we'll probably see a continuing resolution, at least a short-term one, to keep the government running, the federal government running, past September 30th. So one last thing I wanted to make a mention of, Supreme Court has again supported the President on his efforts to fire federal workers. We saw 1,300 let go at the State Department right after that happened. He's allowing, the Supreme Court approved mass layoffs at the Department of Education. Effectively, that department will probably wither, it won't go away, because that was a congressional act that created it, but there won't be anybody working over there. And we're also seeing the Department of Transportation, a lot of significant departures of people. They're not being laid off, they're just leaving. The largest one is the Federal Transit Administration, of course, oversees our transit authority here, transit authorities, or helps support transit authorities here in Colorado. So, Mara, did I miss anything?
No.
Okay, all right. That's my federal report for today.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Turn now to Amy.
Great, thanks. Amy Atwood, contract lobbyist with the city. Good evening, it's great to be here. Thank you for the opportunity, once again, to allow me to represent you at the Legislature this year. It is always an honor to represent the city of Westminster, and the reputation that Westminster continues to have, being a leader in public safety, municipal courts, land use, local control, it is a great reputation, and you have really good relationships as well. So I just want you to know that going into this. My full report is in your packet for tonight. I won't be able to touch on everything, but I'll give you the highlights. So we held weekly calls, like the mayor mentioned, and we found it so valuable as well. Staff and myself, the open communication, and hearing what's happening at the different stakeholder groups that Mayor and Mayor Potem attend, was really helpful on the flow of communication, and I'm hopeful that those meetings will continue into 2026. We reviewed, staff and I, 733 bills, 158 of those we tracked closely, and council took positions on 17. 30%, almost 30% of the bills this session had some type of local control impact. It was an enormous amount of bills this year that had a local control impact. You continue to be a leader, and instead of that one major bill, or five, that we had with 213, parking minimums, ADUs, it really was, we had to be very, very careful and read every bill to make sure that we didn't miss something when it came to local control. And staff as well is great. They're the subject matter experts. We sent a lot of bills out to staff this year for them to review, and they always get back to us in a timely manner. Let's see, we can't fight every fight. So, and there's only so much political capital that Westminster has, and we're very judicious in how we spend that capital, and we work really closely with our partners, the Municipal Judges Association, CML, Dr. Cog, and then other groups as needed depending on the bills. So local control and preserving local control is definitely a priority for you as council. We fought off or heavily amended many, many bills this year, and that will continue, the erosion of local control will continue to be a theme that we see in the Legislature. An example is food truck operations. We secured amendments to preserve Westminster's regulatory power while supporting small businesses. It was important that the food trucks within Westminster could continue to operate. The bill as introduced was an extraordinary example of local control erosion, and through amendments and working with the proponents, we were able to narrow the bill to deal with the issue that the proponents were having, and the issue was specifically with Denver. And so the impact on Westminster, there's reciprocity now that will benefit Westminster, but really the issue was with Denver, and that their process is totally different from everyone else's. Another one was the residential building stair modernization. This was the single stair legislation. We opposed it as council. We were able to work with CML, the Fire Chiefs, and FOP on extensive amendments. Implementation isn't until 2024, but many in the fire community came around, I would say, with the amendments, and they feel confident that it's for new builds and specific building materials, that they felt confident that the legislation as passed is okay.
Amy, sorry, what year is it going to?
2027, December 2027. And then last on local control was local authorities enforcement vehicle registration. We supported this, and it passed with your support, and empowers local enforcement and allows courts to dismiss minor registration violations, and this was something that Westminster PD was in support of this bill. Land use, which is just as much a priority as local control. Westminster continues to lead in this, and whether it is quiet conversations that are had, because there's so much experience within Westminster, or it's very open stakeholder meetings, Westminster continues to lead in that area. Construction defects, if you remember, we've seen that a number of years in a row, and this year something did pass, 1272. It is to, it reforms construction defects law, and hopefully will boost middle market and condo development. Time will tell if it does. There are some that believe it won't move the market, and there are some that believe that it will, and on both sides and all the way around, and really, it will be, time will tell. And then we defeated the YGBY bill, that it was known as YGBY, the Yes in God's Backyard. This was 1169. The official title was Housing Developments on Faith and Educational Land. This was a major win for local control and land use policies. And zoning control, this was a governor priority, and with partners, we worked to defeat the bill, and we were able to do that. Public safety, another of your priorities. This was interesting, we supported 1062 penalty for theft of firearms, and this increases penalties for the theft of firearms, and changes the felony level within that, and the governor did sign that bill. Possession of weapon by a previous offender. This adds first-degree motor vehicle theft to the offenses restricting weapons possession. So we think of someone with a felony cannot possess a weapon. There are other offenses that fall within that, and now first-degree motor vehicle theft will be in that, and the governor passed that, or signed that bill too. Municipal courts, I say this every time I'm here, Judge Lontine is such an asset, not just to the city, but to the state. The Colorado Municipal Judges Association leans heavily on him, and so does CML. He is well-respected on both sides of these court issues, working with proponents and opponents, offering language, really looking for solutions, not just a let's defeat bill attitude, acknowledging that there are issues and problems that need to be resolved. There were two bills this year that, of particular interest. One is the Fairness and Transparency in Municipal Courts. That one, we secured a veto on, and it, in effect, would have dissolved municipal courts. It made all corresponding offenses would have to be parity with the state. So anything that you have a different offense for would go away, and not everything, but many, many of them. And then court actions related to failure to appear. These failure to appear, failure to appear is a problem across the state. These failure to appear, failure to appear is a problem across the state. There isn't any remedy for a municipal court for failure to appear. And we're seeing five, 10, 15 times failure to appear. So this was a CML-driven bill. We worked on it with CML, offered language through the judge, and in the end, it was defeated. The opponents to that bill are essentially the same proponents for the transparency bill. And so a commitment was made by both sides to come together this interim and work together on a number of these municipal issues. It's more than just those two bills and failure to appear and transparency. There are broader issues that both sides agree need to be addressed. As I said, there were 577 bills that were introduced. Five, no, 733. I got my fives and my sevens. 733 bills introduced, 562 passed, and 171 failed. We thought that we would see fewer bills this session because of the budget situation. And we went into the budget with a shortfall of 1.3 billion. But we had the same amount of bills, average bills, introduced this year as last year. State revenue has not dropped. It actually still continues to increase, but taper spending limits and rising fixed costs like Medicaid are putting pressure on the budget and making it very challenging. The Joint Budget Committee avoided major cuts this year by shifting funds. There was a lot of fancy math. And they did that instead of relying solely on cuts. They also did across-the-board 1.5% cuts for each state department, which forced savings. But that was really the only, that was the only across-the-board cut. Two JBC members, Senator Bridges, who is the chair, as well as Senator Kirkmeier, so in a D and an R, both have said there is a structural deficit with the state budget because of these fixed costs. And last month, in June, we had the revenue forecast, which this is how we wrap up this year, which we just finished June 30th. And it's four shadows what we'll see next year, and they said that fixed costs continue to rise. Our population isn't increasing at the rate that it was. COVID money, COVID dollars are gone. And Medicaid, really Medicaid is the big, is a big pressure, is what puts the biggest pressure on the budget. You may have heard discussions of a special session. That's been in the paper, and it's still a rumor. It hasn't been set. If it does happen, it'll happen towards the end of August. The legislature executive committees of leadership, House and Senate leadership and the governor's office will be hearing presentations on the 30th from department heads, from cabinet members, as to what are the impacts of the one big beautiful bill? And are they so urgent that they have to be dealt with before January? So as Mike said, a lot of these things from that bill are not implemented right away. They're not going into effect here in July. They go into effect after the midterm elections. But there are some things like SNAP benefits that some believe need to be dealt with now and that can't wait. So we'll still see. There's also AI legislation, artificial intelligence legislation that was passed in '24 that many believe is unworkable, including in the local government space, that it's unworkable. And that implementation date is at the end of this year. So that is also something that is being pushed if we do go into special session to be addressed. And I just want to wrap up with, we had several bills that were considered part of the blue wall. And they were passed to counter national policies affecting the state. And these bills reinforce Colorado's progressive stance and continued movement towards a more progressive agenda. And one to highlight was Senate Bill 276, which protects civil rights related to immigration status. And another one was 1321, which allocates $4 million to the governor's office to support efforts to push back on federal actions. So even in a tight budget year, pulling $4 million to support the governor's office to push back. We have ballot measures coming up this year, many, many ballot measures. The Title Committee has been busy. I will keep you posted. Once the ballot is set for this fall, what we'll see and what that ballot is going to look like. Planning is underway for 2026. Interim committees are meeting. The Joint Budget Committee continues to meet, and stakeholder meetings are beginning to form, take shape. Legislators tend to take June and July off and get started again in August. So those stakeholder meetings are starting to take shape. And that's it. It was a very busy session. I hope you take time to read the report. And local government and local control is at the forefront of many legislators' minds.
With that. Counselor Zadi?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you too. I think I'm the best state and federal lobbyist probably in the state. Would you agree?
Nice to meet you.
So thanks for being here, and thanks for all the work that you do. I know it's a lot of work and conversations. I have several questions, mostly, obviously, they're related to what we can do as a city in Westminster. My first ones are more federal for you, Mike. What federal grants? So you listed some, but are there any federal grants that are at immediate risk for Westminster, considering the freezes and the cuts?
One of the grants, you saw, you got your first half of your grant that was going to help you with your transition from your grass to more environmentally palpable type landscaping. And so you got the first part of that grant, you didn't get the second part. They just canceled it.
How much was that that was canceled?
Was it, I think it was, I have to go back and look at my notes, but it was several hundred thousand. So that was the, that is one, that was the one grant that impacted Westminster specifically. Certainly, because you have a lot of water improvements, both on your clean water and sanitary sewer, as well as your drinking water, there's a lot of concern about the state revolving funds being cut. The other counselor, the other problem with the state revolving funds is that they're earmarked, or congressionally-directed spending, or community-funded projects, as they're called in each of the chambers. And when you earmark, that takes up a bulk of the funding too. So that could be a double whammy. If Congress cuts state revolving funds and they're earmarked, the states are going to see less money. So if a city like Westminster would like to work with the state and get some of that state revolving fund money for your water projects, there's going to be significantly less of it. So that's another thing to keep an eye on. We're coming to the end of the transportation authorization fiscal year 2026. Mayor, you know this probably better than I do. Comes to, you know, the five-year plan comes to an end. The bipartisan infrastructure law, or the IIJA, as it's called. And so that can be an opportunity for Westy to look at some big transportation funding when the new one is debated, and that's going to start next year. But it also might be, I mean, you know, some of the grants that we've seen previously might go away too. So those are three areas I'd highlight.
And that speaks to one of my questions related to what are those federal grants opportunities that are alive for us to, what's upcoming that we can go after before it's cut, if you will? So is there something that's out there that's not cut yet? But.
Yeah, there are some grants we've shared with staff on transportation safety, safe streets and such. There are, you know, certainly we've seen money cut back on clean energy-type grant opportunities in transportation there. One of the things I point out to people who still might be interested in electric vehicles, those tax credits go away into this fiscal year, September 30th. But the one big beautiful bill does provide a tax deduction for car loans. I forgot to mention that one, and that'll be temporary through 2025 to 2028. But in terms of grant money, it depends. And at EPA, there's, a lot of the grant funding is dried up. For transportation, a lot of it's still in play.
And for those state water revolving funds, my question for you was related to, so he talked about the $4 million water tank relining?
Yeah, that's one of your community-funded projects that's still in play.
It's still in play? I thought that was cut.
No, no. It's going through the appropriations process, which is separate from the other two things that have already passed Congress. So that's still in play. We'll find out this week if it stays in play.
So the 400 million from the water revolving funds, that?
That's been cut by the House, but it has to be concurred by the Senate. And both of them have to pass the bill and send it to the president, and that's a long process. So we'll stay tuned on that one.
So are there any tactics that we can influence the governor's office or the JBC related to those state revolving funds? Because it still comes down to them ultimately, right? The funding would get cut, but they're still the administrators at the state level?
The state ultimately looks at the proposals that local communities send. And even the state has some projects too. So it's not, you're competing, you know, there's a lot of competition for a little bit of money. Always has been. No matter how much money there is, there's always so many more projects.
So would you say that lobbying is the only thing we can do? Or are there more things to influence those stakeholders, governor's office and JBC?
Well, I mean, I would say this, I think your projects are excellent. You know, certainly with the council's leadership, the staff does an awesome job of putting together good proposals. And, you know, lobbying helps, but you can't outlaw a bad project. So and you guys fortunately have good projects.
And I would say with JB, Joint Budget Committee and the governor's office, there is a list of water projects, as Mike said, that get approval. And Water Congress works through those all year long. And we can discuss how we can insert ourselves in our project into that, into that space. It may already be a part of that. I haven't worked with staff specifically on this, but we can work on that.
Do you know how the state agencies are handling the redirected grant priorities? So they have decisions to make, right? So they have to prioritize at this point. Do you have any inkling as to how it's going? I know it's early for them.
So that, I mentioned next week on the 30th that legislative leadership, it's open to the public. And the governor's office will be hearing from departments to figure out what is actually happening.
That's the first time we'll hear.
That's, yeah. And they've been working on that for two or three weeks, well, since it passed, so that they can come forward, and that'll help shape those priorities too.
And you'll give us a report as to what was said? Because I'm curious what the prioritization will be at the agency level.
And the governor has put a website out on, or has produced a website that shows a lot of federal cuts, when it's happened already. So you may have shared that with them.
Last question. Did you mention what the shortfall will be next year, the estimate from June?
We don't know yet. So, well, the estimate from June was at least 600 million. It's really early to tell. We'll know more with the September revenue forecast, and they come out every quarter. So we'll know more, but it was at least 600 million.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, since I can't see your hand, do you have anything?
No, I don't, but I do want to thank everybody for the full year, legislative year, and coordinating with us. It was really helpful. So thank you.
Counselor Camellia?
Thank you as well, everyone, for keeping track this session. I know there was a lot to track. I'm curious, on a different track, on the accountability side of things, at least at the federal level, for departments that are being cut, and I can only think of one example right now. But for the EPA, for example, when they have put, you know, laws or regulations in place, are we going to see any changes, do you think, to those regulations? For example, RMMA, they are phasing off of leaded fuel by 2030. Or we were told that there is directive from EPA for them to do so. Seeing as they might not have the staff, or the dollars, or the et cetera. The accountability for that, do we believe it's still in play?
Well, that's a very good question. A few things. I mentioned the Department of Transportation seeing a lot of employees decide not to continue working there. I mentioned the FTA, upwards of 33% of the Federal Transit Administration is seeing employees depart. Fortunately for the FAA, they're only seeing 4.5% of their workers depart. So and there's a lot of focus on keeping FAA robust. I do think there is trends to reverse a lot of the Biden regulations. We are seeing with particularly PFOS, that the EPA wants to, basically, they remain strong on PFOS and PFOA, but they are looking at reducing stringent regulations on other four PFOS-type chemicals. And that is in front of a court right now. But the intention is to diminish some of the Biden administration's regulations. And I think we're going to see that consistently. And I do think that anything that was agreed to with the previous administration may be in danger of not being adhered to going forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
What a wonderful report, and I know it was a long session, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Enjoy a little bit of your summer. Thank you. Next, that brings us to the presentation of the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Our staff lead tonight on 3B is Ezekiel Vasquez, our chief financial officer. So Ezekiel will introduce, and then we'll turn it over to our auditor.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. I'm Ezekiel Vasquez, Chief Financial Officer. And I'm very happy to announce today that we've successfully completed our annual independent financial audit. And along with that, we've completed the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It is a huge effort, and I just want to take the opportunity here to acknowledge all the folks in finance that worked on that, did an excellent job getting it done in a timely manner and also ensuring the utmost accuracy. Now, the city charter requires us to undergo an independent financial audit once a year. And for 2024, we worked with Forbes Mizzards, the independent audit firm, to get that done. And I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Carmen Jeffries. She's the managing director for Forbes Mizzard. And she's going to give you a little bit of a high-level overview of the scoping results of the audits, as well as touch on some parts of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us here. I always like to come out and have conversations with you guys about our audit and the results. Want to first concur our appreciation to the staff in helping us to get everything done. It is a heavy load, especially this year. We had a couple of new standards that I'll talk about. And so with that being said, it causes for more questions, more work. And so the staff was able to get that done for us. And so we really, really, really appreciate that for sure. So this evening, I am going to go through our required communications. There are a couple of things specifically in the financials or the ACFER, Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, that I will bring up for you all just to make note of. I will not go into a lot of detail or very much at all. I am on that report unless you have questions. And then I will give you the results of your comprehensive compliance report as well. So that's kind of what my presentation will be for today. So I will start with letting you know first the thing that you really, really want to know. You, the city, successfully have an unmodified opinion on the financials, which is a clean opinion, it is the best opinion that you can have. So you all did have that through all the right implementations and things of the like. It came out to be a very clean audit, no issues, no significant deficiencies from a financial reporting standpoint, no material weaknesses from a financial standpoint, and no controlled deficiencies were noted. So nothing to bring to you all regarding that. So that was what you kind of really, really want to know, but I appreciate you listening to the rest of the stuff. So the scope of our audit, we audited as of the year ended December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And it was in accordance with the engagement letter that we had dated October seventh, twenty twenty four. As you know, our audit is performed in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in United States of America and government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General. But with that being said, it is designed to obtain a reasonable rather than absolute assurance about the financial statements. Therefore, we don't look at every single transaction. We pull a sample and based on that sample come to those results. With that being said, there could be something there that we didn't find. So we don't provide you with complete assurance. But we are saying that the, what we audited and the financial statements are materially correct. We are independent from the city. And your responsibilities here really are not, we don't take away those responsibilities based on the audit. You still have responsibilities to look at the financials and things of the like. In addition, we provided reports ended December thirty first, twenty twenty four on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of the financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing, generally accepted government auditing standards. While this is an internal control over financial reporting report, we do not look at operating effectiveness of internal control. That is not what we did. We do go through, we look at things, we make sure things are designed effectively. But it is not our intent to provide you with assurances that your controls are operating effectively. From a uniform guidance perspective, which is the compliance section that we'll talk about, we provided an opinion on the compliance for major federal award programs, the report on internal control over compliance and the schedule of expenditure of federal awards. With that audit as well, we provide reasonable rather than absolute assurance about whether the non-compliant with the types of compliance requirements described in the compliance supplement that have a direct and material effect on the federal award, that they are correct. So we go through there, we determine based on the federal government what we need to test from a grants perspective. And then within that grant, what we need to test. And then we determine that you have complied with the requirements associated. The financial statements are included with the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFER as we call it. We are not engaged to audit the ACFER. We read it, we make sure that everything is consistent with the financial statements. Everything goes through, we're all saying the same thing in all three hundred pages of that lovely document that you have. And so if there are any discrepancies that we find as we're reading it, as we're going through it, we have discussion with management to make sure that those are corrected. From a significant accounting policy standpoint, I made note that there were two new accounting standards in the current year. GASB statement one hundred, accounting changes and error corrections. And GASB statement one oh one, compensated absences. And so in a very high level, what that means is if you want to have any types of error corrections or changes in your accounting principles, then the GASB now provides guidance on how that needs to be handled within the financial statements. And then for GASB one oh one, compensated absences, what that basically has done is originally your vacation was on the face of the financial statements. Now, not only do you have to have vacation, but you're also required to determine how much sick time your individuals will use. Not necessarily, it does not matter if you have, have to pay them for that amount or that you're going to, it's a matter of determining how much you expect them to use. And that now becomes a liability on the financial statements. So those were our two new standards. In the current year, we also look at management's judgments and accounting estimates. And so we specifically are going to take a look at estimates related to OPEB, net pension liability, valuation, capital assets. And we make sure that those are correct. We make sure that those are calculated and it makes sense how they're calculated. What that estimate has, what the information used to calculate that estimate and that is consistent with the prior years. From a financial statement disclosure standpoint, we really just looked at the implementation of the new standards. There is actually a footnote, if you so choose to look in the report. It's footnote, the implementation of new accounting standards is at the very end on page seventy eight, oh, excuse me, seventy nine and page eighty. And it goes into detail on how the implementation of the new standards occurred. What happened, there was one correction, accounting principal change in the current year. And then with GASB statement one oh one, compensated absences, that then had to be done based on one hundred. So they all kind of went together, which was a lot of work for the team. Okay, so now, from a proposed reporting adjustments, we are required to have discussion with you about any adjustments that were made. In the current year, there was one adjustment to correct a AR balance in a fund. It honestly was just a pure mistake. It was not large, it was not material. It just wasn't in the right year. And so they corrected that adjustment. From an uncorrected misstatements perspective, you will see what should have been included in your packet, a very seemingly thick list of adjustments that were unrecorded. The majority of those adjustments that are in this section have to do with prior period adjustments that were not made. We're required to do a turnaround effect. So in the current year, we have to record, okay, what would have happened in the current year had this have not happened in the prior year? So that is the majority of the entries that are noted here as uncorrected. There was one entry that came up close to the end that is uncorrected. And it just has to do with a movement of principal interest related to certificates of participation. And so literally the bottom line did not change. It was just a movement from one line to another line, but the bottom line itself did not change. And so that was just in accordance with the fact of how the certificates of participation need to be recorded in the financial statements themselves. Okay, as we stated, we had significant discussion about the new accounting standards. And we will continue to have, hopefully, significant discussion about the new accounting standards that are coming in the, in the most recent time. Those are going to be GASB statement one oh two, which is certain risk disclosures. That really won't have a huge impact on the city at all. It really just talks about your risk and your investment risk and your credit risk and those things and making sure that those are properly disclosed. The financial reporting model improvements, which is GASB statement one oh three, on the other hand, that will be a different story. That is going to be significant work because that will be an overhaul of some of the ways that financial statements are now presented. If you remember dating myself when GASB statement thirty four came out and it just really killed everything, then one oh three is slightly better. But it is going to be a lot of work in moving things around on the financial statements. So that'll be something that will need to get started sooner than later. And last but not least, there's GASB statement one oh four, capital, certain capital assets. That's going to change the disclosures on your capital assets. One last thing, in my attempt to be transparent, from a compliance standpoint, in the current year, from a grant standpoint, we audited the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, in the current year. That was the grant that was audited. And there were no issues with that grant. There was nothing that occurred that caused any problems from the standpoint of the grant itself. I will make note that you spent approximately a million dollars in grant funding in the current year. So that is a decrease from what you spent in the prior years. One thing that we will make note that the, some of the changes that are coming through with the uniform guidance, the change, the threshold is changing from seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars as your threshold for audit requirement to a million dollars. So you still would have needed an audit, you would have been twenty-six thousand dollars over the threshold. But depending on how those grants continue to go through, that potentially changes if you will need an audit going forward when it comes to your grant funding. As I stated, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. From a federal awards standpoint, you also received an unmodified opinion. And there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses related there either. So that is the gist of my report. Thank you. Any questions?
Counselor, sorry.
So thank you for your presentation. Every year you come here, every year you tell us we're perfect. I want to say hallelujah to the finance team. I think I'll give them the same acquis I just gave the previous folks. I think we have the best finance team in the state. Have we ever had, my first question is, have we ever had a finding significant? Cause I've never seen one while I'm, while I've been here.
Vicky says no, and she's been here only twenty years. But, you know, I'm not aware of.
Well, she lapsed me five times over, so I think I'll believe her. So it's, it's pretty important that people understand too that with, you know, what she just mentioned is we had two accounting standards changes. When you have, and one of my old, one of my many old lives was in accounting briefly. Cause I, I can't handle this. But when you have an accounting standard change, it's very, very easy to make mistakes, to have findings. And this staff has gone through so many standard changes that, and we've been perfect. This is something that I wanted to highlight, that that's how detailed that our staff is. And I wanted to thank them and thank you for telling, for telling us we're perfect. We love to hear it. So thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Camellia?
I'll just say thank you for your report. This is the second time I've heard a report from you and it is just so clear that you understand your art inside and out, and I really appreciate it. So thank you for everything you do for us.
Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Mayor Protem, did you have anything?
No, sorry, couldn't get my speaker to come off.
Thanks. I just wanted to say, really, I read every page of everything that was in this piece. I just get fascinated with, you're able to put everything down, explain everything just as you did publicly, but in writing. And that's hard to do for a one oh one and not go to sleep and think, what is she even talking about? When you got to that list that you shared in the report and, and what all it meant, it was just an easy read. I appreciate it so that you don't feel like, what am I missing? Or where's the gobbledygook here to understand? It's very precise and it was excellent. So thank you for that because that's an art in itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Does anybody need a break before we do? Yes, okay. Five minute.
Yeah.
Concept Plan Review for Uplands filing three parcel C1, Prose multifamily development. The next item is a concept plan review for Uplands filing three parcel C1, Prose family development. This is a concept plan review. It is not a hearing on a development application. His purpose is to allow city council to learn about a proposed project in its beginning stages and to provide feedback to the applicant on city council's general impressions of the proposal. In accordance with the Westminster Municipal Code, concept plan reviews occur after city staff complete the pre-application review for a project, proposed project, but before staff perform technical review for the project. The technical, technical review, which involves an official application for an ODP, PDP, or amendment thereto, will occur only if the applicant chooses to move a project forward after its concept plan review. As part of the review process tonight, city staff will provide a brief introduction, and then the applicant or its representative will present an overview of the applicant's development proposal. City council may then ask questions of the applicant and provide the applicant feedback on the proposal. City council comments on the proposal are gratuitous in nature and are not binding on city council, the planning commission, city staff, or the applicant. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and city councilors. John McConnell, Planning Manager here tonight to provide you with the staff's overview. The subject property includes planning areas C1B and C1C within the Uplands development. The site is vacant land generally located on the south side of West 88th Avenue and east side of Federal Boulevard and west of Decatur Street. The subject property spans two parcels of land. One parcel, planning area C1B is 1.64 acres, and the other parcel, planning area C, C1, um, 1C is 6.85 acres. The propose, the property is zoned PUD and designated urban multifamily in the 2040 comprehensive plan. The proposal includes the construction of 288 multifamily residential units and 10 three-story buildings, a clubhouse, a pool, and associated site improvements. The multifamily community will take access from West 88th Avenue to the north, Federal Boulevard to the west, and Decatur Street to the east. For the applicant to pursue development of this property, they would need to process a PDP amendment and official development plan. The comprehensive plan designation was recently changed to urban multifamily on April 28th of 2025, and this was per the property owner's request. During the site planning process, the development will need to take into consideration that compliance with the comprehensive plan is mandatory, including structured parking, minimized surface parking, and designing a site layout with an urban form that engages the street and public realm. Staff notes that the current site design presented in the pre-app does not meet the minimum off-street parking requirements, and the required number of spaces is 396. 320 is being proposed on the site, resulting in a shortfall of about 76 spaces. The current site design proposes that 69 spaces would be provided on adjacent streets. Uh, however, the code does not contain provisions to allow on-street parking to count for off-street. City council may consider a reduction in the overall requirement in conjunction with the ODP approval. Notice was provided for the concept plan review tonight. The applicant posted 14 signs on the property and mailed over a thousand notice letters. The notice was also posted in the Westminster window. All required notifications took place on or before July 11th. If the applicant chooses to advance these applications, the public will have the opportunity to provide input during the review process. The first opportunity will be accommodated by the city-required neighborhood meeting that takes place between the first and second review cycles. The second and third opportunities will be at the public hearings of the planning commission and city council at later dates to be determined. So this concludes the staff's presentation, and I've already prepared the applicant's presentation. The applicant team is here to present this to you, and I'm going to allow them to introduce themselves to you and take away the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors. Uh, thanks for having us tonight. Um, I'm Andrew Farley with Alliance Residential. Uh, here with me tonight is Ryan Edwards with Alliance Residential and Hersh Pareek with Santalan Architecture. And Robert Palmer. Uh, I'm going to take us through our presentation tonight, and then we look forward to your comments and questions. Uh, we'll start off with just a quick introduction to Alliance. Uh, we're headquartered in Phoenix, but have been operating locally since 2006. Our managing director, Andy Clay, unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but Andy has been running our office since we opened and has been in the multifamily industry since 1999. Uh, we'll start off the, uh, kind of in general, our presentation. A couple of sample developments that we've completed in Metro that will demonstrate our product variety, as well as pieces of these projects that would apply to our proposal for Uplands. Uh, the first image you see here is from a multifamily development in the Lowry neighborhood of Denver. The key aspect we'd like to focus on with this development is the street frontage and how the buildings and units themselves interact with the streetscape. These units on the ground floor each have their own patio with direct access to adjacent sidewalks. We found that by doing this at similar developments, we're able to make the streetscape very engaging and promote a pedestrian-friendly community. Our residents also tend to prefer these units because of the direct access, especially those with pets. Uh, the next slide is the same project, uh, but a couple of interior, uh, design images that we threw in to show, uh, the level of design that we're capable of at our Class A luxury product. Uh, the second development we're highlighting here is one of our attainable housing developments. Uh, this one opened last year in Thornton off of 104th. Uh, while this specific project was more suburban in context, we plan to use similar building efficiencies at Prose Uplands while providing a more urban design vernacular in both site design and architecture. We also have some images here of the clubhouse interior design demonstrating that we can still provide a great design for these amenity spaces, although slightly smaller than a Class A luxury product. Uh, this next slide shows more of the building architecture of the same project, but note that this is more suburban in context. We don't have the street engagement here at this project that we are proposing at Uplands. Um, our goal with this proposed development is to provide an attainable multifamily community to add to the diversity of housing types uh, and price points within the overall Uplands development, as well as adjacent neighborhoods. The proposed development will serve a middle-income rental demographic who may not be able to afford new Class A luxury product, but also cannot qualify to live in an affordable housing community because their income is too high to qualify. Uh, these renters typically cannot afford a home purchase, but instead of stretching beyond their means at a luxury community, uh, they can save over time to make that home purchase a reality. Our goal is to provide a new housing, provide new housing to first responders, teachers, and those in the service industry, as well as skilled trade professionals. This is commonly referred to as housing for the missing middle, and we greatly, uh, and will, this will greatly help the lack of affordable housing in the metro area. Now we'll narrow into the, the site that we're discussing. Uh, this slide shows the location of the proposed development. The subject parcels are PAC 1B and 1C located in the southeast corner of 88th Avenue and Federal Boulevard. Parcels PAC 1B and 1C were approved for multifamily with no commercial or retail requirements and currently allows up to 300 multifamily units. On these two parcels, we are proposing, um, it was mentioned in staff's, uh, presentation, 288 units. We have scaled that down to 276 units in order to meet that structured parking requirement, which we'll hit on in a moment. On these two parcels, we are proposing 276 attainable multifamily housing units in 10 three-story buildings with a centrally located indoor and outdoor amenity package. Uh, the apartment homes are a mix of studios, ones, and two-bedroom units, ranging in size from approximately 550 to 1,200 square feet. The site has been laid out to create engaging steep street frontages all around the site and connectivity to onsite amenities, as well as connections to Wrights Way and the greater pedestrian network that the city and the Uplands team has created. We believe our proposal meets the intent of the approve, uh, approved PDP amendment by incorporating the following. Uh, first, parking has been kept generally internal to the site. Secondly, we've created an activated corridor along Federal Boulevard that generates future ridership for the bus rapid transit while encouraging the principles of a 20-minute neighborhood. Thirdly, providing much-needed housing in a diversity of housing types and price points. And lastly, providing access to community parks, public trails, and open spaces. Uh, we are requesting a number of exceptions from the multifamily residential design standards, but the requests generally fall with only three, within only three categories. Uh, minimum setbacks, balcony and patio design, and an upper-story step back. Uh, consistent with other approved setbacks in the Uplands development, we are requesting similar relief here in order to reduce water usage and create more pedestrian-friendly landscapes. We are also requesting exceptions to the patio and balcony quantities, as well as sizing requirements. The patio and balcony quantity requirement is 50% currently, and we are requesting a ju, a reduction to roughly 33%. Reduction in balconies will allow us to create large usable ground floor patio spaces with pedestrian connections to engage the street frontage and activate the site and adjacent parcels. This will also encourage the use of not only the outdoor amenity space within the development, but also the surrounding trail networks and other public open spaces and parks of the nearby neighborhoods. Uh, we've listed here, uh, the multifamily residential electives that we intend to include in our development application to hit the minimum point requirements. Highlighted here are some that we would like to request slight exemptions to in order to be able to deliver a product that meets the intentions of the multifamily design standards. Uh, four of these electives are to provide a 2,000-square-foot clubhouse that meets LEED Silver Certification, provide a seven-kilowatt PV array on half of the development's buildings with three-kilowatt PV array at the clubhouse, and design one-quarter of the buildings to meet the Department of Energy's zero-energy-ready home requirements. We would like to take a more holistic approach and design the entire project, including all buildings, to meet National Green Building Standards and provide the infrastructure so that all buildings are solar-ready. Such a holistic approach, uh, might be a bit more expensive, but will be easier to design, construct, and manage. The benefits of such a holistic approach will also be more fairly distributed among all residents. Uh, the fifth elective that we're requesting to modify is the 50% masonry requirement. We are proposing a more dynamic mix of masonry, wood siding, vertical board and batten, and painted lap siding in a modern architectural, architectural vernacular that uses less masonry but is more evocative of current design trends. As shown on the table, we are not seeking any other alter, alternatives to the other electives that have been selected. Um, on this line, we've zoomed in on the southern larger portion of the site to highlight the street parking that has been designed on the neighboring local streets. First, you can see by our parking counts that we are required to provide a total of 396 parking spaces for 276 units in a mix of studios, ones, and two bedrooms. Of the 396 required spaces, 56 are allocated as guest parking. Within the site design, we are currently providing 320 parking spaces. The highlighted street parking totals 69 additional parking spaces that we are requesting to count towards our parking requirement. A majority of those spaces would cover our guest parking requirement, and the remaining 13 spaces would offset our onsite requirement. At the time that we submitted this presentation, we needed to request a reduction of seven spaces. Uh, since then, we've learned that staff would be reluctant to support a plan that seeks any parking reduction. In light of this, we've taken a hard look at the site layout, and we do feel confident that we can add seven spaces to the plan to eliminate the reduction request. Based on prior ODP approvals within the Uplands development, we do feel that there is adequate justification to include on-street parking into these parking calculations. If on-street parking is included in the count, this project will meet the city's parking requirements. Also, to address the, uh, a couple of the items that were listed in staff's presentation, we are providing 24 connected, uh, garages to meet the structured parking requirement of the comp plan. Our initial proposal did not have these garage structures, and at that time, we were able to provide 288 units. Uh, the addition of the structured parking has caused us to reduce the unit count by 12 homes. Um, and to another point, as mentioned earlier, we are designing the architecture and site layout to engage the street and public realm in a more urban context. While we are seeking some exceptions to the code, we would like to point out that we are also exceeding the code in many areas. Instead of 4% common open space, we are proposing twice the amount, roughly 8%. Instead of a 2,000-square-foot clubhouse, we are proposing a 6,000-square-foot clubhouse. We will also exceed the bike parking, dog cleanup station counts, and turf grass requirements. Um, I'm sure you're all familiar with the connectivity map uh, that the Uplands team has presented in past meetings and illustrates the impressive pedestrian network that this group here in this room and the Uplands team has created. The site will have the benefit of the 10-foot multi-use trail to the north along 88th Avenue, an eight-foot sidewalk along the entire stretch of Federal Boulevard, and six-foot local sidewalks around the rest of the perimeter, including local streets 86th and 87th places and along Decatur Street. This idea of connectivity has also been brought in, uh, internally to the site with connections to these public walks from every building entrance and throughout our site to create a very pedestrian-friendly environment. These connections will help generate future ridership for the bus rapid transit along Federal with two bus stops conveniently located near the north and south ends of this development. Uh, this concludes our presentation, uh, but we have prepared a handout for, uh, council members. And we look forward to your comments and questions.
Thank you.
May I add a few words about the handouts? My name is Hersh Pareek. Uh, I'm, uh, the president of Santalan Architecture. We've done about 15,000 units of housing, mostly in the greater Denver area, a couple of them in Westminster. So, um, the first image shows what the project would look like. We have the L-shaped building, uh, from the corner of, uh, that would be Federal and 87th Place. And you can see how we have some recessed balconies, uh, and then, uh, just a big buffer along Federal and how it engages with the street. And you get a sense of the architecture where it is kind of, you know, respectful of some more agrarian heritage, but also very contemporary and modern. So we like to do something that fits in the context, is of its time, but also has qualities of timelessness. Next image shows what the buildings would look like from the rear, and it kind of highlights the, you know, one of the disadvantages of doing tuck-under parking is that sometimes those back spaces become dominated by garages. But this shows how with soft landscaping and putting parklets that you can sort of soften the image of, uh, parking even on the inside where you've sort of hidden all the parking away from public view. Uh, and then the next two images are, uh, are sort of our in-house images, so they're not that fancy. But they, mainly to show how the street frontage works and how every public entry is architecturally accentuated by those tall gabled dormers. So it's pretty obvious for any visitors where you go. But then every dwelling unit on the ground floor also meets a sidewalk, and people can walk out. And the last image kind of zoom that shows how you have upper levels, some of these sort of Juliet balconies, but they also engage with the street, provide on-street kind of eyes-on defensibility. But then the two big patios on the ground floor, they, you know, as Andrew said, they'll, you know, probably likely have a lot of pet owners and everything, and everything flows out on the street to create this very dynamic and, 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 you know, responsive environment. And that's it. Just a few words about the architecture. Thank you.
Um, just remind councilors, um, of the kinds of questions that we should be asking, and keep in mind that the city regulates the form of the development, not the ownership, pricing, or affordability of residential units. So are there questions? Counselor Camilio?
Maybe, but you kind of just addressed it right there. Um, I, I just wanted to touch on the affordability of these, but, um, I guess, can I at least, uh, address percentage-wise, uh, with, you know, if there are any affordable units here?
You may.
I mean, there's no limitation on AMI if you're asking that. The idea is to use, there are no subsidies being utilized. So it's a, it's a market-rate project, but designed with great efficiency to, to cater to folks who are not in the upper-income brackets. But I'll let, I'll let Alliance expand on that.
Sure. Um, so this project type, we specifically designed for the missing middle to be, as opposed to the luxury rate that you're seeing where four or five stories with the big parking decks and the blowout amenity packages that are, um, well outside of most people's income levels. We designed ours to be somewhere between 10 to 15% lower. Um, I wouldn't even say than that, lower than the average A-class property that you're going to see around the area to be able to serve a demographic that they make too much to qualify for that affordable housing thresholds, but they don't have the financial capacity to say, I want to put all that discretionary income in that way. So like we
So like we mentioned, it's really designed for your first responders, your teachers, your service industry, that they'd like something nice, but can they, this would be a solution for that.
Thank you. And then to clarify, there are no units for sale?
No, ma'am. They're not for sale. This is an entirely rental demographic or project.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Ireland?
So has staff had any concerns about water usage on this?
No, ma'am. Sorry. My apologies. Provided they're in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, the Comprehensive Plan of Urban Multifamily has accommodated for the water assumptions for this project, so the water would be fine.
I am concerned about the parking not being compliant with the code. We've had other neighborhoods or other apartments like this that tend to go into the neighborhoods. The parking, it's not a good outcome, honestly. So that's my biggest concern. I do like that they're only three stories high, but I am concerned about the parking.
Counselor, or Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. I was actually ironically less excited it's three stories right along Federal. But I understand the type of market you're trying to hit, it's just, you know, it seems a little almost too suburban for Federal with the imagery that I'm seeing. I haven't seen the handout, but, so I, a couple of questions. One is the bus stops that you mentioned in the last slide. I would love to see if you could provide shelters for those, not just a bench. So that would be just an ask. I mean, you are trying to hit, you know, like you said, the working individual, so theoretically you're going to have some residents who are taking advantage of those shelters. So again, I'd love to see those have, you know, at least one of them have a shelter. So that's one question you don't have to answer at the moment, but please consider. The second thing for me is regarding the, I looked through all of the exceptions. I always, you know, I think most of them are reasonable and they do match what has already been approved, like setbacks. And I think the only issue I have, again, is always just skimping on materiality and on the number of balconies. It seems like, I know you're trying to hit, really, you're designing it to hit the actual market rents that are along Federal here. I don't feel like you're trying to, you know, that's just what the market rents are. So, you know, I don't love seeing us let go of some of those design standards that would actually make it a, you know, good-looking project, particularly along Federal in this area. I think the materials for me is probably the biggest one versus the balconies. And then, I guess my other, my last pet peeve is, you know, saying that they're going to be attainable even though you're designing it to attainability. There's no, there's no guarantee through a deed restriction that you are trying to hit rents that are 80% to 120%. Those are often, you know, above the service industry, but yes, it would hit something like the public service industry. So that's just for me, I really, you know, don't like to hear people say that they're going to, that they're making these attainable because there's no guarantee they'll be long-term attainable. They're attainable now theoretically, but they're going to be market rate and whatever the, you know, market rents are going to be able to bear. I know you're designing it so it's not luxurious, you're only going to get so high, but again, just, I just encourage, I don't know, maybe staff can work with developers to not try and solateneability so much unless it's deed restricted. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Anyone else? I just wanted to say, I loved your report, and we get so many about affordability and whatnot, but you put into words and from your standpoint, the things that you have to look at in order to make something affordable. And I often say, what's affordable to me, I could cross Sheridan, and that's not affordable to me. So that's a sort of a meaningless word that you can't have just one label for, but I loved the report, and I kept reading through it, and it helped me understand all of the things you have to take in consideration and why you asked for some of the things you asked for, because they cost money, and if you can do it this way and at least have something versus not having it, you just shared about that, and I really felt like you were looking at a quality lifestyle there. I love that you don't see any, most of the parking is going to be inside and tripling the clubhouse, whatever you call it, community area. Because when I looked at Federal and the places that will face that for children, I started to have panic attack and thinking, oh. But then when I saw your whole concept and saw that was in the center and not anywhere close to the road, I felt much better. As far as, when I looked at the, I just, I've got four different apartment complexes in my area, so I watch how they park, and if they have a bottom level, they're never going to park inside here, they're going to park, they'll use those outside parking. We have that on Lowell with some of our townhomes. That's where those people that have a front door park because it's easier than to get in than if they went back through the garage and stuff. So I just appreciated your, it's one of the first ones I've read to help me truly understand all the pieces and parts you all have to look at for trying to get a market rate for the people that maybe can't afford to get into a home today but have some, something that's not taking all of their money in rent, and they can still save to get that home. So I appreciated it.
You know, it's ironically, so we do, we do all the full spectrum of affordability from permanent supportive housing all the way to Class A. I think we've done maybe 5,000 units of affordable housing. Ironically, affordable housing is much harder to build in a market way without any subsidies, right? And so if you don't have Lytec, if you don't have bond money, you don't have all of those gap-closing devices, then frankly, what you're relying on efficiency and certain breaks, like maybe we don't give 100% balconies, maybe we don't do 100% structured parking. So what we've attempted to do is to come as close to all your goals as we can while still meeting our goals for construction costs, which will directly translate to lower rents. That 80% to 120% middle-income, there's a reason why it's called a missing middle, right? It's hard to do, especially without subsidies.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I'm sorry. I did forget one question about the, what's it called? Now I've lost the word, clubhouse. So I guess my question is, and I don't really see in the design a way to reduce it, but why, what is the purpose that, what is the thinking around tripling it instead of giving that room to the individuals? And I don't think that the balconies, from what I see, for example, could be made any bigger on that, but I do think that folks want as much room, and of course, we need the parking. So just curious about the why, and do we think it'll be fully used?
Yeah. Yeah. So this will be our, locally in Denver, our fifth model of this type of housing that we built. We have three completed, one under construction, and this would be our fifth. We have kind of dialed in the clubhouse, and so we don't provide, like on our Class A luxury, you know, we could provide like 10,000 to 14,000 square foot of amenities, which is what you see if you go to a new kind of larger apartment complex. And they have, you know, all the bells and whistles. Here, we've slimmed it down to 6,000. We provide a fitness center, kind of some, two lounge areas, a conference room, some work-from-home space for people, you know, if they're renting the smaller units, it's kind of nice for them to leave their apartment and work in kind of a social area that's, you know, semi-private to the residents. But we've limited the amenities, and 6,000 has really been a very comfortable number for a community of this size, kind of around that 300-unit number.
Okay. Thank you. That helps.
And, you know, financially speaking, each balcony would be like $10,000, right? And, you know, you can see something that's five foot by nine foot, and that's great, a little bit of relief to walk out of your units. But on the other hand, imagine the efficiency of really tricking out this space and then giving everybody access to it. Fosters a sense of, you know, community, people make friendships versus divvying that resource up into small sections. We're not saying we won't do any. We're saying we'll do 33%, which makes sense for us, especially on the ground floor. We'd oversize those, as you see in our design.
Anything else from staff?
Nothing for staff.
As stated at the outset of the concept plan review, counselor comments are gratuitous and do not bind or obligate the applicant, city staff, the Planning Commission, or city council to any course of action or future decision. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
And that's it for tonight. We're adjourned at 8:26.